I'd like to call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, September the thirteenth, two thousand and eleven. Commissioner Ward will give our invocation and Commissioner Mclemore will do our pledge. Please stand.
Father, we are here today to ask for your blessing and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interest of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the better men of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Our first order of business is to recognize Ernest Cousins, Superintendent of the Steel Branch Water Treatment Plan, upon his retirement for thirty-eight years of service to the City of Griffin. Director of Public Works, Brant Keller, will address. Oh, okay. All right, we'll go to item two. The other week I had the opportunity to attend the South Side reunion, Neighborhood reunion, and I presented a letter to them recognizing this reunion and asked that it become a part of the City Minutes for tonight. And so at this time I'll entertain a motion that we, I'm sure all of you have already read it, that we will put the finished copy in the Minutes.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you so much. Is he here yet?
Uh-huh, he's in there.
Okay, Brant, he is here. Thank you.
As I promised...
Hello?
As I promised, last month we had one of our employees retire after thirty-one years. Ernest has been with the city thirty-eight years. He's the superintendent, or was the superintendent of Steel Branch Regional Reservoir. Ernest has worked his way through the ranks and he has excellent knowledge of the new computerized systems that are used in the water business. It was, it's really gonna miss Ernest. When you open up a new plant, you always find out what engineers don't know that design the plant. And Ernest is one of those individuals that was over to come some of the opportunities that you have when you always have a new plant startup. I've been knowing Ernest since two thousand and two when I took over and he's probably one of the most dedicated people that we have on our staff, on my water staff. The other significant factor is, is not only is Ernest retiring from the City of Griffin, he's probably one of the smartest operators in the state. He is retiring, and the water business is losing a lot of people like this. Ernest is a very good chemist and he's a very good production person and he can produce water where, and sometimes when younger people don't have that skill set, he knew how to make it all happen. And after thirty-eight years Ernest has decided to hang it up. He's gonna hang it up three years ago, but they took a dip in the economy and the 401 went downhill slightly. So Ernest came in and says, "I'm taking my resignation back. I'd like to play the game a little bit longer." So not only is he a smart water operator, he's a smart business person, but on behalf of myself and all the people in Public Works and the city, I want to say thanks for your hard work.
Wait a minute, get your picture. We don't often get those, so please, get that picture. Ernest, we'd like you to introduce your wife as well. We assume.
That's my wife.
Hey Pamela. Forty-three years, that's...
Forty-one.
Forty-one, very good.
I don't have too much to say. I'd just like to say, I like to, I felt like as long as I'd done my job, that I would have a job and I'd never worried about my job. And I would like to thank, and it passed in the present administration before that, I mean something to know that you have a job. And out all that time, I never missed a paycheck. That's another thing. So I would really like to thank y'all for that. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith. He knows you, he sees you, he recognizes you. Dr. Keller, I can't say enough about Dr. Keller.
Good, I hope.
He's public work. He's got all this to it, so. Gave you an opportunity and I hope I met his expectations. And I'd like to say bye to the employees, City of Griffin. I've met a lot of them, had a lot of them as friends, and they're truly professionals. So...
Thank you, Ernest. Yeah, we'll miss you. Okay, at this time we'll recognize Marcus Schwab and we'll go through our financials for the month ending July thirty-first, two thousand and eleven.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I gave to you this, just before the meeting began, the replacement packets and I'll discuss the three changes as we go through the financials. So first off, let's begin with the cash balance report. There was a question, or a few questions posed today about the reserve. What exactly is the reserve column? Well, that represents money that are reserved for bonds, debt service, interest payments, and payments, et cetera. So if we look at the Water and Wastewater Utility Fund, roughly one million four hundred and thirty thousand, that is segregated for the bond and debt service. Looking down in the investment section, another number that sticks out is the one in Electric Fund for three point one million, and that is the utility deposit account. It's invested and it is reserved. And then the other items are, the restricted column represents money that are either locked by grants, legislation, commission action, et cetera. And then the operating, obviously, that's available for use, for operations. Any other specific questions regarding the cash balance?
No, but I think that's good that you told us and you explained to us about the reserved, because I think we ask about it all the time.
Moving on to the Local Option Sales Tax Report. First month worth of collection, this is July, so it's on target based on the initial estimates and the way we prepare the estimate is on an annual basis. So eight point three percent, we're coming in at eight point six percent. It's on target. The special purpose local option sales tax appears to be on target at the moment. However, there are a couple months that are dedicated throughout the year, three months worth of payments that are reserved for the capital bonds. So that money gets diverted to satisfy the facility bonds first, before it gets released to the city. Trending on that report, though, my word of caution again, is we're still about seven percent off the mark for the total estimated collections. So we're still early in the game, there's still a couple years to go, and we are using that information to sort of reposition some of the projects. And we're gonna, we're in the process of prioritizing. The second page of that SLOST analysis details, without getting too detailed, the core projects that were identified in the SLOST. And it shows the budget, the expenditures to date, and what is remaining on those projects to be spent. So that's two thousand ten, two thousand and eleven money for those projects. The ten million nine twenty-three represents the entire SLOST for the entire five-year, five-year brand, five-year period, yes. But if you add up the total revenues coming in from two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve, that's what total, that's what brought in for those SLOST projects approximately? Approximately three, three point two million dollars. Three point two million dollars? Yes, sir. So we've got about two million dollars sitting out there in a reserve account? Yes, sir. It's actually, actually, the money is with the Bank of New York and it is reflected on their statements until it is released to us. And I do present quarterly the Financial Status Report, which kind of shows how much the collections have been for the fiscal year. I can see about adapting some sort of, either adapting a report or perhaps presenting the statement that we receive monthly from the Bank of New York, if that would help. So if we've got two million dollars, can we get a report that shows where that two million dollars is gonna be going into the future months so that... That'll, that'll be predicated upon how the projects are released and let out, and then how the expenditures come through. So that, that money doesn't come directly to us, well, no, excuse me, let me rephrase. Yes, it does come to us direct and then we issue the payment directly to the vendor. But if we've got two million dollars, can we get a schedule showing us where we're gonna spend that two million dollars next? Yes, that's... Yours, I asked you. We actually prepare a document for the budget process, that sort of timelines projected expenditures related to those projects. Any other questions on SLOST or SLOST?
Let me ask a...
Yes, sir.
...question. You know, the state, what, through all this monkey motions, straighten out the sales tax collections and go electronic and get the money in and even things out. Do you have a comment about how good that's working and, or not? You know, we still vary from month to month, which I know we would, but I was trying to, tried to watch it and I, I guess I don't have a good picture.
The way I would, the way I would answer that, or I'm going to answer that, is this. Overall, there's no change. The dollar amount that's collected is remitted. What has changed is the timing of the collection. That has been compressed down to, to ten days. So we're getting the money thirty days sooner than we would have under the old system. So electronically, it's getting collected, it's getting reported within the ten to fifteenth day period, and then we get it by the twentieth. So that part is working? Yes, sir.
I guess you satisfied Mr. Morrow, but you confuse me when you say overall there's no change. Clear that up a little bit?
Yes, sir. The amount of money that we receive has not changed. It's the timing in which we receive that money. It used to take sixty days to get the money in because the, the businesses would report by the thirtieth and then we would receive it by the thirtieth the following month. Now they're required to report within ten, fifteen days and we get it by the twentieth. Did I, did I, does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Moving on to the interim statements by fund. This is a replacement packet that you received as you approached the diocese afternoon. What has changed in here is the top section of the cost of goods sold. There was a change in the gross profit, profit percentage calculation. It was a formula error in the initial reports. So that's the primary change there and the two funds that are affected are the golf course and the airport, because they have merchandise either for sale or they have the food and beverage for sale. And this is a cosmetic change to the reports that we've seen in the past. This is now a new addition for the two thousand and twelve fiscal year.
Well, this threw me for a loop.
Yes, sir.
And you're saying this is golf course and airport basically only?
Yes, sir.
Why does it pop up at the top of...
That question was...
Citywide Fund, it doesn't, it just...
Yes, sir. The, that question was posed by Mr. Smith earlier today.
Very important.
The way the reports are designed and function within the CogDale and the FRX reporting system, which is a system that generates these reports, you create, we create a framework for the, for the reporting mechanism. The top sheet is a total of all the underlying funds. So if there is a component in there that has cost of goods sold in one of the units, whether it's airport or golf course, that will automatically be rolled up to the top. I will continue to explore ways to compress this or eliminate this from the front page. In the interim, this is what we have.
All right. I thought maybe we were running a hot dog stand out there, something I didn't know about. That's what it looks like.
Well, there...
We are, we are.
We are now selling beverages out at the golf course.
Yeah, I see that too.
Yeah.
All right.
And that's only, that's reported under alcohol, though, isn't it?
There is, there are, at the golf course, we have food and beverage, we have alcohol, and we have the merchandise, the protein.
Right.
So those three items are segregated.
Okay, good deal.
Yes, ma'am.
Always looks strange stuck up around the top of the citywide fund.
Yes, sir.
I hope beer sales at the airport are doing well.
I don't think we have them there.
That's a joke. That's a joke.
They implement...
I've heard about these pilots before, but...
The end of the mountain bike trail would be good, too.
Rob, are you doing something?
Okay, again, this is the first month of the reporting period. Really, there's not much to discuss unless you have something serious or major that catches your eye there. There was nothing material or remarkable about the month of July.
Are there any other questions? All righty, well, then we appreciate this report and we thank you for your thoroughness.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move on to citizen comments. I'll open the floor for comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for unlimited expression of opinion. The chairperson reserves the right to limit comments to matters that remain to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. Having said that, is there anyone on my left who would like to come forward and make a Is there anyone on my right who would like to come forward and make a comment? Okay, Ms. Jewel, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Jewel Walker Harbs and I live at one oh three Macelfell Drive and I'm speaking on behalf of the NAACP.
I'm sorry, we didn't understand you.
I can't, I can't hear you.
My name is Jewel Walker Harbs and I live at one oh three Macelfell Drive and I'm here as a representative of the Griffin Branch at NAACP.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I want to, I want some clarification, at least I want to call it to your attention that there is some concern about the, the health and safety of our people who live north of our railroad track. It's been well publicized what we're gonna do with the Sixth Street Bridge. That's going to be closed. So we are concerned that there will be adequate measures taken to ensure the health, welfare, and the safety of those persons who do not live on the same side where most of our safety and health facilities exist. Are not just firemen or policemen, whatever, but also individuals who may have the need, who may have emergencies, who have the need to get to and from this side of town because it's here where most of the fire stations are located and certainly it is on this side of town where the hospital and most of doctors, of the doctor's offices are. So in our attempt to beautify and progress and whatever, we want to make sure that those persons who live north of the railroad tracks do not go forgotten in terms of their needs. It would be too late when somebody dies or a heart attack or houses consumed by fire and to say, "We did not plan for that." So we would like to know that you are and we would also like to know what the plan is. I intended to speak with Mr. Smith personally, but I have not had an opportunity. So we wanted on the record to say that we have made this request. We will look very carefully at what is given to us in terms of making these needs met. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jewel. Kenny, would you like to respond right at this time about the measures?
Yes, ma'am, I can, I can do that. We, we do have plans, our public safety, Chief Strickland, our public safety director and Chief Jones of our fire department have made plans and have worked with our EMS facilities and Spalding County. What we plan to do is stage ambulances on the north side of the tracks at our fire station. There are also some going to be staged at county fire stations. We will also have police officers that will work out of the fire station on the north side of town and be staged there. We're working with Norfolk Southern and are getting a schedule of when their trains will come through, so we'll be able to try to gauge what's going on by their schedule. Now, if a train does tie up the tracks for a considerable amount of time, we'll have to notify the emergency responders of which crossings are blocked so that they can plan their route when they leave a certain area to try to get to the emergency room. But we will have first responders on that side of the tracks to respond to the emergencies. The problem will be if they have to get back across the track to the emergency room. Again, we're going to try to coordinate with Norfolk Southern and our officers will keep our nine one one dispatchers apprised of when the tracks are blocked for an extended period of time so they can plan their route when they leave an area. We also have the ability to land the life flight helicopters at our fire station on North Hill Street. So in a dire circumstance, we could plan for that life flight to be there and airlift somebody from there to the emergency room. There's no way we can guarantee with a hundred percent accuracy that we won't be inconvenienced by the tracks being closed, but short of having some temporary bridge over the railroad tracks, we've done what we feel is just about all we can do to try to cover all circumstances that could arise.
Okay. Ms. Jewel, will you need that in writing?
Yes, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I would need it in writing.
And I'd also like to know what effort is being made for those persons who may not be first responders or those persons, in other words, if just by chance I want to go and get into book of records and I'm having a baby and I need to get to the hospital real quick, who would be, would I be able to do that? Would I have to make sure that I had an ambulance? I had to call an ambulance or whatever to get me there because they would be the ones... I guess what I'm saying is, I'd like to make sure that the public is aware. And I'm not sure if you're talking about closing both of the, the gates to the, to the track at the same time or there will be one open, the one right here by the welcome sign, both of those. Are they going to be closed at the same time or do you know?
It would just depend on the train situation, the length of the train, and I mean, we don't, we don't know that ahead of time. The only thing we know for sure that will be obstructed will be the, the overhead bridge crossing over the tracks, over Sixth Street Bridge.
Yeah, that's my concern, that one of them, and if, if they're both closed, I would hate to get to that closed crossing and then find out that I'm gonna have to go somewhere else in order to get, get across, which means that it will necessitate that the public be well aware of the fact that there is a need to get from one side to the other side and to do it quickly, that they would know automatically that their alternative route would be route X or whatever.
We will do our best to get the publicity out there as to exactly when the bridge will be closed and what we're, what measures we're taking. We would urge anyone who has an emergency and feels like that the train could be an obstruction to dial nine one one and let the emergency responders take care of it because they will have more communications with the nine one one center and the train schedule and the other emergency responders in the area to have more information. So I would urge them to call nine one one if they have an emergency rather than, than trying to cross the tracks on their own.
Okay. Well, let me say this, as soon as we get something arriving and we're gonna look at and scrutinize it, if we have other concerns or suggestions or what have you, then we will definitely get with you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, and that is a concern, so we want to make sure that everyone will be aware of what is gonna, is trying to be taken care of there. Okay, at this time we're in, into public hearings. They're conducted to allow public comment on specific advertisements such as rezoning, ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. So at this time, we will consider a request for a special use permit to allow for the utilization of an existing structure as a place of assembly for property located at seven thirty Pimento Avenue. Tassant Kirk will address this issue for us.
What we have here is New Mercy Baptist Church, the conclusion of a special use permit to allow for a place of assembly overlay to utilize the structure that is parceled located at seven thirty Pimento Avenue for a place of worship. The property is presently zoned, planned industrial district, and is being utilized for commercial land use. A special use permit is required to designate the property as a place of assembly overlay district for use of a church. The purpose of the PAO district is to encourage the beneficial development of assembly uses and properly regulate church uses in a indiscriminatory manner. New Mercy Baptist Church has been operating from seven forty-two Pimento Avenue and is looking to add these seven thirty Pimento Avenue locations to complement the church's growth. Planning staff has found that the request for the special use permit for a place of assembly district at this location is in compliance with the requirements outlined in, outlining the ordinance. Planning and zoning board recommend approval of this request with planning staff's three conditions. Condition number one, upon vacating this location for its principal site, the PAO will be voted. Condition two, the PEO, PAO shall be limited to seven thirty Pimento Avenue. And condition three, fire and life, fire and life safety inspection shall be conducted to determine the maximum occupancy prior to issuance of a new CO.
Okay, thank you. This, this is a public hearing and the purpose of that is if the public would like to come forward and make any comments.
Ask questions?
Yes, go ahead.
First, I assume the applicant is okay with the, the conditions and understands them?
Yes, he's actually...
He's here, yeah, Robert Caldwell is here.
Second, if this is approved, will we move ahead with the lease and the terms of use and so on?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Okay.
I have one question also. Is that gonna be parking in the rear?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, as I said, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and make a comment at this time? Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Rod.
Is anything actually, is anything being, it says remove a vacant under utilized ASOR, they're bas, basically removing it or just rehabilitating the existing structure?
Rehabilitating.
Okay. All righty, thank you. All right, our item number five is to receive comments regarding the expansion of the Southwest Griffin Urban redevelopment area and its adoption by resolution. Tassant, you will be addressing that.
Ma'am, we're asking you to consider the expansion of the Southwest Griffin Urban redevelopment area...
Would you talk into the microphone, sort of line it up better?
Hello?
There.
Consider the expansion of the Southwest Griffin Urban redevelopment area to cover the parcels that run along the eastern right of way of South H Street, which will allow the specific parcels that can participate in the Opportunity Zone or the Job Tax Credit Program. On March twenty-third, two thousand and ten, when the Board of Commissioners adopted the Southwest Griffin Urban Redevelopment Area and the Urban Redevelopment Plan, the specific area was not designated. With the approval of the expansion of the Urban Redevelopment Area, these parcels, if approved or redeveloped, will be able to participate in the Opportunity Zone Program, which provides up to thirty-five hundred dollars per employee job tax credit program.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the public would like to come forward and ask a question or make a comment, this is now the time... this is now the time to do it. What about the Board of Commissioners? Any questions?
Was there any reason why this wasn't included, the first come around?
Well, the boundaries were set for, the natural boundary is the street and it just, it, that, it stopped at the street and then include the east side of the, other, uh, other, east side of the street, so we're just asking to extend it.
Okay.
Was there something going on that makes this inclusion important?
Uh, I think it just, it, um, helps to include everyone that's in the medical district, basically existing businesses that are there right now as well.
You're not about to make a big announcement or something?
Not that I know of, that's all.
We do have activity down in our medical overlay district, so that's, that's kind of exciting as well. Any other comments? All right, we're going to the consent agenda. Uh, we have our minutes of our regular scheduled meeting as well as the workshop. Uh, have y'all read them and are you happy with them?
Madam Chair, there's no objection. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, we now go to our regular agenda. Item number seven is to consider a request for a special use permit to allow for the utilization of an existing structure as a places of assembly for property located at seven-thirty Pemena Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we approve this with the conditions, three conditions as attached.
All right, we have a motion to approve these with the conditions attached. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. Item number eight, to consider approval of the expansion of the Southwest Griffin Urban redevelopment area and its adoption by resolution. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. Item number nine, consider a contract between the City of Griffin and, and American Logistics International Incorporated for the asbestos testing as part of the city's substandard abatement program. Uh, Tassant will be here, I guess, to answer those questions. Our Kenny?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. Number ten, consider service agreements, right-of-way easement, and contribution and aid of construction in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars to Central Georgia EMC for installation of a utility pole and service to the Shoal Creek landfill maintenance building.
A motion to approve?
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Dick did.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Mr. Holberg seconded it.
Nope, Dick did.
Oh, Dick did, oh, okay. Item number eleven, consider the purchase of a replacement engine for a roll-off truck in the solid waste commercial division from the lowest bidder coming south in the amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Item number twelve, consider purchase of two twenty-six ninety-six ga-, two hundred and twenty-six ninety-six gallon garbage carts for use in the solid waste division from consolidated disposal systems, the sole source provided for this cart in the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Motion to approve?
Have a motion to approve and a second?
Question.
And a question.
You have a question?
Yeah, I, I wanna hear, uh, were you gonna address something about the?
Are these blue or the green ones?
I'm just here to answer questions.
Are these the blue ones or the green ones?
They're the green ones. They're, we're replacing some of the twelve-year-old containers.
It's the same size as the one?
Sixty-four gallons, we're going down the size.
Going down.
For the blue ones?
Oh, for the, no, 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 no. You're talking about, the, these carts are ninety-six gallon, these are the big green carts.
Big green.
Big green carts.
Big green garbage cans.
You're going down on those size.
Big green egg, huh?
No, this is the standard big one.
The standard garbage can that you have at your home now.
Is what, I mean, do we need, do we have a need for those?
Yes, sir, yes. The ones we're replacing are twelve years old and they're splitting and damaged and the wheels are broken, the bottoms are coming out, the sides are splitting, and that's just a matter of, just a replacement cycle for those containers.
And you're expanding it to the county as well?
And it'd be nice if we could, yeah, and we do have a few.
Little here and there.
But we do have some twelve-year-old containers out there that need to come off the street.
So, all of those containers are twelve years old?
Some of them are, yeah, the majority of them are, yes, sir. They were bought when Mr. Reed took over years ago, yeah.
When we moved, we moved our garbage can too. Almost could've rolled it. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? We all have them, all right? We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. Item number twelve, consider purchase, whoops, we just did that, didn't we? Item number thirteen, consider approval to purchase off-state contract a two thousand and twelve Ford F-350 crew truck. Wow, from Allen Vigil Ford in the amount of thirty-four thousand, forty-five dollars.
And there's a, there's a amended thirteen here.
Okay, let's see, we've got, um...
Includes a fabrication.
Fabrication for it too.
All righty, uh, okay, we are going to rename this. We are going to consider approval to award a purchase order for, to Allen Vigil Ford in the amount of thirty-four thousand and forty-five dollars for the purchase of a two thousand and twelve Ford P, or F-350 crew truck chassis, and a purchase order to K&amp;K Manufacturing in the amount of twenty-nine hundred and fifty-five dollars to fabricate and install a flatbed on the chassis to replace unit seven forty-three.
You've got two hundred and thirty thousand miles on the O, and you did pretty good.
Yes, sir. I move we approve.
Right, all right, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item number fourteen, consider approval to award to T-Rex Utilities a purchase order in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents for the rebuild of unit seven thirty-six, a two thousand and three T-Rex Utilities with five-foot bucket truck material handler.
Motion to approve?
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, and do you have a question?
No, I have a comment. I, I, when I read this, I was impressed that you could rebuild this for thirty-one thousand dollars and a new one is almost two hundred thousand, that's amazing.
Yes, sir, it's, uh, but it is a, a fine line because it is a two thousand and three chassis. We're gonna try to get five more years out of it, so it is really extending the life of that chassis. So, it's just something we have to keep a close eye on.
Very good. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Item number fifteen, consider an annual subscription for supplemental power purchases for the year two thousand and twelve via Municipal Electric Authority of Georgia.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the, uh, the agreement as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agreement as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Item number sixteen, consider a task order for Centagro to de-water and remove sludge for our digester number one at Potato Creek wastewater treatment plant in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Wow.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those, yes, a question, sorry about that.
You're showing sixty thousand of a budget of a hundred and eighty. Is this the first of three payments or did you get a great deal, Dr. Keller?
Uh, no, sir, what we were able to do is we used the mu-, the budget amount that we used the first time to commercially have those things digested and de-watered, and this time we found another way. We were having problems during the last process from, from a nitrogen standpoint and meeting permits, so we spent the last ninety days trying to find an alternative way, and the alternative way saved that money.
Really? Way to go. So, there's a hundred?
We're actually gonna...
Hundred twenty-nine.
Twenty thousand dollars, thank you, Dr. Keller.
Is there anything, anything we're losing because of this solution versus the?
We're not losing any solution, but I'll come to you later where we're gonna spend the money at Harry Simmons. That's another million.
You got a place for this, Will.
Well, okay.
Well, the, the good thing is, is both of them will still come within budget.
That's, that's fantastic. All right, we've heard the explanation. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
And do we have a motion and a second al-, already? So, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy. Do I have a motion to remove from the table and consider a request of the Spalding County Collaborative for Families and Children for ten thousand dollars matching fund, funds for the strengthening communities, non-profit, fund, non-profit capacity building program grant?
So, move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to remove, to bring it back from the table. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it is on the table. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to deny the request, um, for the Spalding County Collaborative for Families and Children in the amount of ten thousand matching funds, the strengthening community fund, non-profit capacity building.
Do I have a second?
Uh, can you base it on recommendation from legal counsel?
Uh, based on the recommendation from our legal counsel.
I'm gonna have him recede myself.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny based on our legal opinion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Do we have a discussion, Bill, please?
Yes.
Uh, I'm gonna vote against, uh, basically because of legal counsel, and it's one thing that, you know, I struggled with because I do think it's a good group, I do think they have good causes and everything, but I, I do worry about setting precedents for these types of things, and ultimately, legal counsel did refer to us that making a, uh, gift to public dollars, um, as he saw was not allowable, so that, that, of course, concerned me because I did not want to go against his advice. Uh, one thing I did think about was that the school system a couple of years ago did donate, what did they do? They did contribute ten thousand dollars and I, I had to think, how did we do that? So, when I went back and looked, ultimately, those dollars came from a trust fund and not, uh, from the actual tax dollars, general fund, and, uh, it was essentially a donation fund where, uh, that had a three-member board, so that was essentially how they were able to donate that, for the sake of consistency, uh, uh, and how they handled that as well, 'cause I'm not aware of any trust fund that, that the city has like that where someone donated a large amount and they could decide what to do, interest, uh, I will go with our legal counsel's recommendation on that. However, in the future, if there are opportunities that, that allow us to work with them, um, whether it's an event or s-, you know, that, that direct benefit to the city that's ultimately, uh, the ability to, to invoice the cities, then, um, uh, you know, I, I regard that as an operating decision and, um, versus a contribution decision. So, I just wanted to state that.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Yeah, let me ask a question, no. In the past, we have donated toward Will and his organization. True or false?
We have never donated money, I don't think, have we, Mr. Smith?
I, I'm not aware of a, of a donation, ma'am.
No, we have representation, uh, on the authority. We have a board member that is appointed to that position, uh, the citizen committee part, and we have a police officer who also serves. When the authority was set up, it had representation from the city and the county, and it had, uh, then it had citizen representation. It also provided for your state representatives to come and be part of it at two annual meetings or two, two me-, two meetings or maybe one annual meeting a year to, and then they do publish a report for us. They give us a great end-of-the-year report about all of the, the things that have been taking place in our community per year. Uh, so, they, they do exactly like the hospital authority does, they, they let us know what they've, how they've spent their money and, and what it's gone for. Uh, okay, are, any other comments?
I'm gonna abstain reluctantly, but as a non-paid volunteer member of a board that receives some funds, I can say, I don't think I have a conflict, I'm not gonna argue the issue, but I'll say that it has greatly benefited many nonprofits around here, included ours, so I think it's a sort of a sorry end to this, but it is what it is, so.
Okay.
We're overdone.
All righty, we have two abstentions. All those in favor of denying this due to legal decision, please raise your right hand. Okay, and it is five-two, Judy. Thank you.
Five-zero.
Five-zero, that's right, two abstentions. Uh, we have, uh, city manager's report. City manager.
Just a reminder that we'll have a public hearing on our airport environmental assessment. It will be next Tuesday, one week from today, here at City Hall from four until seven PM. Our Citizens Government Academy is going well with our first class last week. If you missed that, we introduced you anyway.
That's true.
And use your photograph. Uh, you're welcome to come by any Thursday evening at six-thirty this coming week. They'll be learning about our Department of Administrative Services, so you're welcome to come by and we'll introduce you late. Uh, and Dr. Keller would like to mention our drought restrictions that we're proposing.
Did you give this to the media?
No.
Brandt, will you, will you give it to them tonight?
I'll give it to them tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Because there's a typo in it.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna let it go, uh, we, I extended the day from Thursday to Friday to give people an opportunity to, um, have a... Situation is, last week, um, you, as you know, we went to modified level one two weeks ago. Um, we had a, a conference with Noah last week and the state climatologist. State climatologist says that we're gonna get little to no rain in the next sixty days. The new forecast and prediction model will come out Friday for December. Uh, the challenge, obviously, is that Heads Creek Reservoir is, um, declining. Uh, we're already starting to get, uh, brown water calls, and that, that particular issue is because, uh, the manganese being pulled off the reservoir. Uh, we have, by going to this drought restriction, we'll be, uh, extending the opportunity for rain till about January the second. We've shifted our load from Heads Creek Reservoir, uh, Harry Simmons Treatment Plant to Steel Branch. We're in the process of not putting on a second shift, but also a third shift to get the full maximum capacity of the Steel Branch Regional Reservoir and minimizing, uh, the withdrawal from Heads Creek. Um, hopefully, there'll be some rain sometime in the future, uh, but right now, uh, due diligence to our wholesale customers and to our residential customers, uh, find it necessary. I spoke to EBD last week, uh, on Friday, and again yesterday, and, uh, we're not the only people going through this frustration. Lake Lanier is down seven feet as of twelve o'clock last night. Lake, uh, West Point, uh, reservoir, uh, it's down, uh, nine and a half feet. Uh, Athens Clark County has gone to a, a certain level of drought management. We're gonna have to go a little bit further due to the lack of capacity in Heads Creek. So, tomorrow, I'll be releasing to all the press and to everybody that we will go into a mandatory drought restriction with no watering, outside watering, except for certain exclusions. If you'd wish to read, you want me to read it in the record, I can, but basically, there will be no outside watering if you don't fall under the exceptions. The exceptions are pools that are gonna lose their structural integrity, uh, outdoor lawns and landscapes that are provided by professional landscaping people will still be allowed under this provision to water in for thirty days under the provision that they water from twelve o'clock at night until ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, the ornamental pools, uh, these fountains that people have will be prohibited from filling those. Uh, there'll be no, uh, outside building washing similar to like what I would do at my home, where I would pressure wash my own house because I have the skill set. Uh, a lot of people pay professional skills. It doesn't take much to run a pressure washer, okay?
That's why I was wondering why you put it...
Yeah. Well, anyways, this is usually the first question that you all will get by telephone call under the last time that we had drought restrictions. What does it do to commercial pressure washing? It doesn't do anything to commercial pressure washing. It doesn't do anything to commercial pressure washing. Be no washing of hard services, and obviously, there will be no fundraising at this particular time for outside car washes. The exceptions also are that there's not many people in town that do reuse or gray water, but that's also allowed, that will be allowed. So, basically, this will be in the newspaper, it'll be on the radio. Code enforcement will work with people in town. We've had a few violators under the last restriction. It never fails to amuse me how much you advertise and educate, and people still think you'll water on Fridays. It's been a state law since August of last year that you cannot water in the state of Georgia on Friday, but we'll try to be as customer-friendly as possible. We have a couple folks that we've actually given warnings to and asked them, and we'll make sure that we try to not infringe upon the public other than to give them a warning. But if they persist, obviously, you have in this package what the recourse is for noncompliance.
What about fish ponds?
Fish ponds can have water in them as long, because it is detrimental to aquatic environment, as long as you have fish in your pond. If you have no fish in a pond and you're just filling it up, then obviously, you'd be violating.
Right, now, this is not edible fish, this is ornamental fish.
It doesn't matter, as long as, if it affects any type of wildlife vegetation or ecosystem type environment.
Okay, because I didn't see that listed on there.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Any questions? Hopefully, it'll rain. If you all got any connections, try to make that happen so we can get the rest of our back.
Well, if we could wash our cars, it would rain. That's true. You're absolutely right. That's what my husband does. He wouldn't wash a car. Kenny, anything else?
Just one quick correction. Robert corrected me. The airport public hearing is at the Welcome Center. The Airport Advisory Board will be meeting here at City Hall, but the public hearing itself is at the Welcome Center next Tuesday from four to seven.
Right, and that's a drop-in deal for all of us, just to drop in, not necessarily all at the same time. Okay, Sheer, do you have any comments?
I just want to comment on the nine-one-one program, and I would like to say, as an American Muslim, that program was very dear to my heart and it meant a lot to me, so much so that I got up at a doctor's appointment, it was taking him too long, I got up and walked out because this program meant that much to me for me to be there. And I was, because of the great country that America is and this great city of Griffin that we live in, it was just that much important to me. And I just want to say I really enjoyed it and I can't say enough about it.
Thank you, Sheer.
And Ms. Flornoy coordinated that with Mr. Clark over at the county, so I'd like to recognize her for her efforts.
Absolutely. I think she needs a round of applause. That was fantastic. She makes everything happen behind the scenes, people. You don't realize how much that that pretty little blonde lady does over there, but she makes everything that we do happen, and we certainly appreciate her. Commissioner Moore.
I want to second what I thought a great program nine-one-one was, and I really appreciate the little pocket park over here, and I complimented County Commissioner Flowers because she took heat for that unfairly so, but I told her it's a great addition to our city and I thanked her for pushing on that, so it worked great, didn't it?
It did, it is fantastic.
I also say that the first Upper Clint Water Council meeting two years ago was held here. We hosted it. It's moved all over for two years as we meet and meet and work on the water plan. We presented the water plan last May, the draft, it's been out, I think, for ninety days for public comment. Those comments have come in. The last meeting of the Upper Clint Council will again be back in Griffin after two years, here next Wednesday, starting at nine in the morning. You all are welcome to come in at any time, listen or visit or do what, but we are going to be considering all the public comments and if we need to make some revisions in our plan, which will become final after that meeting and go to the state legislature for adoption, so come, come visit us and listen to all the water talk if you'd like.
Okay, anything else?
Just echo on the nine-one-one ceremony, that's a, it's a great day, ten years back. We look, I remember campaigning, my first round against Mr. Landruck and Mr. Ives the week after the incident, and it was just an eerie weird feeling to go knock on doors and ask for people's vote at that time, and ten years later, our communities may not be as close as they were that week following the election, but it brought back a little bit of how America, how citizens, whether you're Democrat, Republican, white, black, Muslim, Christian, I mean, everybody was together as one country, and that's a good feeling. Thank you all for staff for everything you did.
Thank you. Commissioner Mclemore.
Yeah, I was wondering, Brent, how in the world are you going to replace thirty-eight years of expertise and experience over there? Are you going to do it or...
Martha Droule has been promoted to Harry Simmons and Mike Milton, has spent six years at Still Branch, we've approached her, does an understudy in our reception team. It's always hard to move that kind of knowledge base, but we compared her five years ago and Mr. Milton, he's a senior supervisor and will have the annual superintendent at Harry Simmons, and we require him to walk out.
Wow, so you have a lady going to work for you over there to run it?
First, Martha, she's the superintendent.
Fantastic. Yay, we may need to have you bring her so we can meet her. That's neat. Oh, yes, you will introduce her.
She was our employee of the month one month.
Yeah, that's great.
Top operator for this district, we empower your life.
Fantastic.
Well, that, yeah, it seems like we have a lot of longevity here. It seems like every time you come across any of the employees, police department and all that, everybody's got twenty-plus years here, so I think that says some good things about the experience and talent level that we have. Also, wanted to mention that I was excited about number nine on our agenda, the contract we have for the asbestos testing, because it shows a concerted effort towards a systematic approach for addressing our dilapidated housing issues and everything, so I appreciate that you guys went out there and are looking for ways to reduce those costs that would get more out of it.
Okay, Commissioner Evans?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Warren?
No.
Okay. And it's down to me, and I'd like to announce that we met, that Mr. Smith and I met with Mr. Freeman and Mr. Wilson last week after the nine-one-one ceremony to discuss, discuss the airport. And it was consensus of the group that we asked the attorneys to draw a draft intergovernmental agreement for consideration by both boards that encompasses the following: creation of the Griffin-Spalding County Airport Authority, local legislation to be introduced by David Knight in two thousand and twelve, authority to issue bonds for the project. Members of the authority shall be as follows: nine members total, two members from the city commission, two members from the county commission to be appointed by the respective boards, five remaining members to be appointed, two by the city, two by the county, and the third to be alternately appointed between city and county.